Welcome to the April 16th, 2019 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the council chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma at 7:00 PM. This evening, the education will be given by Pastor Gene Newberry of South Yukon Church of Christ here in Yukon. Following the invocation, we'll have the flag salute. Pastor Newberry. Ready, rise please.
Let's pray. Our God of heaven and earth, we bow before you praising your name and thanking you in the name of Jesus Christ for this opportunity. And heavenly father, I pray for each and everyone that's here, that your spirit be upon them and among them, leading them to make the wise and discerning decisions that are best for this community so that all can benefit and be blessed. Heavenly father, watch over this time of gathering in this meeting. May all be done to the glory and your honor, for this we pray in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
McCarran?
Here.
Smaestra?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Presentations and proclamations this evening, we have two gentlemen by the name of Mr. Robert Cox. Mr. Cox, would you stand up please and join me up in the front here. One of the proudest things we have in Yukon are people who volunteer and give of their time freely. Robert Cox, lovelingly known as Skyview as Papa Cox, that's pretty neat, has volunteered as a watchdog in the Watchdog Dads of Great Students Program for 10 years. He began volunteering when his granddaughter was in first grade. She's now a senior at Yukon High School. Even after his grandchildren moved on from Skyview Elementary, Papa Cox returns every Monday over the years and continues his volunteer for his other 600 adopted kids. Students and teachers alike look forward to his visits each Monday because he's always cheerful, enthusiastic, which makes starting a new week a lot more exciting. A lot of people aren't excited on Mondays. It is his dedication of volunteers like Papa Cox that make our school district and our community stand out above the rest. It is because of his selfishness actions over the years that we would like to recognize him as one of Yukon's best. Thank you very much. Modest as always. Once again, thank you. Let's give him a really warm round of applause. Ms. Eileen Smaestra, would you come down please?
As she's making her way down, I just want to add, I had the opportunity to work with Papa Cox when I was at Skyview Elementary and truly was a joy. Thank you for your service.
I don't have as much prepared for Eileen because she is one of our very own and very special people here on the council. She served for over 12 years in the capacity of being on the council, has given of her time givingly for many, many years. She certainly is a member of my church as well, even though we get harassed occasionally for being from the same church. I just want everyone to know how very special Ms. Smaestra is. Once again, giving of her time and coming up here, it's not always a lot of fun, but it is always a time in which people give back to their community and she's done that in more than an exemplary way for a number of years. And for that, I want each and every person out there to know what a special person she really and truly is. So tonight, we present to her, Ms. Eileen Smaestra, a plaque that says, "Thank you for your years of public service to the city of Yukon," which is both substantial and more than praiseworthy for 12 years? 12 years.
Just because I'm the oldest person in here, you did that. But anyway, I've had a wonderful time here. There's a lot of wonderful people and I hope that the future gets even better due to my Mr. Putin, Wooten? Sorry.
Can you say Smaestra?
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's been an honor. And you may see me again, who knows?
Absolutely.
But thank you very much.
There are so many people who do give of their time, not to mention just the folks on the council, but all of those who participate in our various committees and things like that, the traffic committee, the planning commission, the board of adjustments, parks and wrecks, library, all of those people are very special that give of their time freely to make this community what it really is. And my heart goes out to each and every person who's willing to stand up and do that. Visitors, the section of proceedings is for visitors who would like to address the city council on a non-agended item. Each person will be given three minutes to address the council and by open meeting rules, no discussion will take place. We do have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agended item?
Mr. Mayor, John Corrin, our chief of police is here and may want to introduce our new major. He would just take just a moment.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'll be brief, councilman and mayor. Last week, we did an appointment, we had the retirement of Major Knight, which I think you'll remember several weeks back. We have appointed Matt Fairchild as new major within the police department. So Matt's here with me this evening and we'd like him to be recognized.
Okay, well, have him come up here to the podium. Turn around and wave to everybody, Matt. Really glad to have you here. You bet. You know, and I guess that's just another thing, you know, one of the shining things we have in Yukon is both our police and fire and we're very proud of each and every one of them and certainly Mr. Fairchild now growing the group, coming up through the ranks and coming up this evening and getting promoted is pretty neat. And everyone should be aware that we do have one of the safest cities, certainly in the state of Oklahoma and in the United States and it's due to no small amount for the wonderful police department that we have. Okay, are your heads big enough now? Yeah, we just, we do have a really good, really good group here. We'll now recess as the Yukon City Council convenes as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the Yukon Municipal Authority is the consent document. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority can, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in the regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April the 2nd, 2019, B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $20,815.87. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item 2A, presentation and acceptance of the 2017-2018 audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. You don't look like Lonny Heim.
I am not Lonny Heim.
We need a motion?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? Okay?
Very good. My name is Chris Heim. I was the manager in charge of this engagement. I'd like to thank the council for engaging us to perform this audit. I'd also thank Philip and his staff. We are definitely an inconvenience when we come in here. We ask for a lot of documents in a short amount of time and so we appreciate their work. And then I'd like to thank Crawford and Associates. They provide a lot of schedules and provide a lot of explanations on a lot of questions that we have during this audit. So with that, I know you've discussed some of this information with Frank already, so what I'm going to do is go through our reports of the audits and then hit some of the schedules that I think are important for the council to review. So I'm going to start on page five of the auditor's report. So that first paragraph on page five just simply states that we have audited these financial statements. The second paragraph is management's responsibility. Management's responsibility is they are responsible for the financial statements and they are also responsible for the implementation and maintenance of internal control at the city of Yukon. Okay? So our, the third paragraph there, the auditor's responsibility, our responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements. We perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So those standards require us to plan and perform this engagement to obtain reasonable assurance on these financial statements. Paragraph four, it describes what an audit is. An audit involves performing procedures to obtain evidence. The procedures selected depend on auditor's judgment, including the risk assessments, I'm sorry. So we, as we're, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're on page five. Okay. So as we go through the audit, we look at your internal controls at the city, but we do not express an opinion on those internal controls. So we'll discuss that in our second report here in just a little bit. But on paragraph five, we believe that we obtained enough evidence to express an opinion on these financial statements. So in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So that's a clean opinion on the financial statements and that's the best opinion that we can offer as auditors. Okay? So the next page, on page six, that references some other schedules in our second report that we'll go over in a little bit, but for now, I'm going to skip to page 11. So on page 11, it's a table of net position, it's a summary. Pages eight through 16 provide really good information. It's management discussion analysis. It's kind of a condensed version of these 80 pages that are in the financial statements. So what I'm going to look at at that table is the bottom net position, the bottom of that table where it says net position. Your net position at June 30, 2018 is $40.5 million. That was an increase of $4.1 million in the government activities from the prior year. And that is a $1.5 million increase of your unrestricted net position. So that's moving in the right direction there. On the business type activities column, your net position is $8.8 million down at the bottom of that table. And if you see compared to 2018 or 2017, that is an increase of $5.4 million and almost a million dollar increase of unrestricted net position. So heading in the right direction there again. So the great thing about the MDNA is it provides a narrative format, gives you explanations on some of the fluctuations that occur. So if you look at that table, your current assets at the very top of that table, in the government activities column, it went up from 11 million in the prior year to 24 million in 2018. And so that's an increase of $14 million, 128 percent, yeah, 128 percent. So it gives a narrative format of why those fluctuations occurred at the very bottom. It increased due to $6.2 million in the 2017 bond. There's cash for that. There's $3.8 million from the sale of the land and reserve fund cash increase. And some other bullet points you'll see at the bottom there. So again, narrative format and that continues to page 12. So if there's any fluctuations within that table, you'll see explanations on those on page 11 and page 12. So good information for the reader there. I'm going to go to page 13. Similar format, a comparison from 2017 to 2018, this is your revenues and expenses. Just a couple of points on here. Your taxes in the revenue section, they went up by 12 percent from 24.5 million to 27.5 million. So that is your largest revenue item and it increased by 12 percent over the prior year. So that was again, narrative format. If there's fluctuations that you want to know about, they're at the bottom of that schedule there. Bottom of the table, the increase in net position, it was in the government activities, $4.2 million, your revenues over expenditures. And then on the business type activities for 2018, revenues over expenditures, $5.4 million. So from there, I'm going to skip to page 18. This is the government-wide financial statements and it creates a financial picture of the whole city as in one page here. So we got the assets and liabilities and the net position and this is government activities and business type activities, the whole city at large. And then the page 19 is your revenues and expenditures for the entire city, government and business type activities. I'm not going to go over any of the numbers there because they are within that table that we just discussed. This just provides a more detailed look at it, involves your capital assets and your debt related to those capitalized sets as well. So from there, I'm going to go to page 34. So this is your cash, cash equivalents and investments at June 30, 2018. So the table at the bottom there, and the total cash and investments was $26 million. But of that $26 million is a reconciliation down below and there are restrictions within those. So there's, if you look at the bottom of that table, the restriction in cash and cash equivalents, current of $15.8 million, restricted cash and non-current, $1.5 million and there's some other restrictions is there as well. So the detail of those restrictions can be found on page 36 because those are just, that's just a summary of your cash restrictions.
On 34, you started off with a couple of the numbers that you read there and I didn't pick up on the, where did you start on the 15?
So that bottom table on page 34.
Oh, okay, 15, 8, 54. Is that where you started at?
Yeah, well, the total deposits and investments, they totaled to be $26 million and that includes money market.
I see what you're saying.
Time deposit, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But the bottom, the reconciliation is probably what you were referencing to.
Well, yeah, I got caught up in the 25, 9999.
Yeah, yeah. So there's some restrictions of that $26 million and those restrictions can be found on page 36. Majority of those are with your bonds. In the middle of those restrictions, the 2017 series construction account, $5.8 million, those are restricted for those bond funds and expenditures. And then at the bottom, your general fund reserves, $5.1 million. So of those restrictions, $11 million are in two accounts there. So, okay. I'm going to skip to page 44. So this schedule will show your restrictions, again, in your fund balance. If you look at your governmental activities, general fund and other governmental funds, it'll have your restricted net position, which consists of, from external groups, creditors, And then we have your unassigned fund balance, which those are implemented by the council or management if they're given that authority. So, and then at the bottom of that schedule, you will have your unassigned fund balance for the general fund. And your unassigned fund balance for the general fund is $2.2 million. So that, the $2.2 million is about 10 percent of your general fund revenues. So that's a healthy position. It's not, it's probably the desired minimum, I would say, but it keeps on increasing each year, so that's a positive on that. So this is a good schedule to reconcile with your governmental activities, your fund balance. So I'm going to move, now going to skip to page 63. So in the past, we've had some compliance findings. There were some expenditures that were exceeded your appropriations and so we had findings on that in the prior years. So this is just a note disclosure saying that there were no exceeding of that budget for the June 30, 2018. And then in the past, we've had a finding on the use of restricted reserves and that is for the .25 cents of restricting sales tax. If you look at that schedule where it says use of restricted reserves, the middle of that schedule, it'll say required reserve balance, 25 percent. So at June 30, 2018, the required reserve balance was $4.1 million and the city of Yukon exceeded that by $1.5 million. So you're, in the current year, you're in compliance with that, the .25 sales tax reserves. So from there, I'm going to skip to our second report and that is on page 83. So this is our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. It's kind of a byproduct of what we do. So we don't set out to form an opinion on your internal controls while we're doing the audit. It's just something that as we're performing our procedures, we look at the internal controls of the city. So a good example of that would be we're looking at the capital assets of the city and the additions that the city made. So we might look into if you were in compliance with the Competitive Bidding Act. So those are, that's just one example of the way we would look at your internal controls and your compliance with state laws and regulations. So this report, in the past, we would have findings on. In the current year, we do not have findings. And the prior year findings are on page 85. And those were required under government auditing standards to show the prior year findings and if they are a repeat finding or if they have been corrected. So in the prior year, 2017-1, that was a finding on the bond activity in the past. You'd get your bond statements and I think we would not keep accounting on them on a monthly or quarterly basis. The staff is now keeping the accounting on the bond funds on a regular basis. So that finding went away. So the second finding we had last year that has been corrected was the exceeding of the budgets and that did not occur in the current year. So there was no finding on that. So with that, there's one more letter. It's a required communication with the council under government auditing standards. So if there was any difficulties during the audit, if we had any uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management, anything of that nature, that would be reported in this letter and that's just a letter to you as the council. So we did not have any of those findings in the current year. So this is a pretty standard letter, so you can look over that at a later time. With that, I will open it up to questions, if you have any.
Any questions from the council? So I'll start.
Okay.
So what you're telling me right now is we have a very clean audit and that it's significantly better than it was last year? Do I detect that from your tone and cooperation and the fact that we had no findings apparently and corrected the two that we had in the past?
Yes, sir. So I think when we started this, I believe in '16, we might have had eight findings and each year, we've slowly got rid of those. So, and this year, we didn't have any. So, yeah.
So basically, we've gotten down to a pretty clean audit area where the city understands what you want and you understand.
I would say so, yes.
What their, you know, what their current position is. So I guess this is what you call, what is it, unconditional clean opinion or just clean opinion or whatever you?
Correct. That's the best opinion we can offer as an auditor. So, yeah, clean opinion, unmodified opinion.
Well, I ask that every year.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
Yes, sir.
And that everyone else hears that as well.
Yeah.
You said there were no issue finding on budgets or anything of that nature that, well, I'll just openly ask it, but were there any areas that you felt uncomfortable with at all throughout the audit?
No, sir. No.
Okay. I'm assuming I'm getting a nod from Lonny over here.
If there's any bad news, it would be. If there's any bad news, it would be Lonnie presenting, you know, so.
Right. Once again, are there any other questions from the council?
I read the entire booklet, and I was very impressed with that, and the way that you also, because this is my first year on the council, the way that it went into detail and explained very well. Thank you.
Well, that's Crawford and Associates providing a lot of that detail, so.
Or with his baseball bat in hand, or?
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, do you want to wait until the second part, or do you wish to get up and give yours right now? I, I think this would probably be the right place to go on. So everyone understands, at the same time, a few years back, we had quite a few difficulties, as a lot of folks are aware. Mr. Crawford was engaged at that time as a forensic auditor, and has put together findings over the last couple of years, and this year has done that for us again. We have a document called the Performator, and so he's going to give just a short dissertation on what his current performance audit turned up and what he saw.
Thank you, Mayor. And to echo what Chris kind of said, gosh, it doesn't seem like it was just, what, two or three years ago, we were kind of dreading listening to audit results and findings, and whether the opinion was going to be clean, and what the fiscal health looked like. So quite a turnaround from, you know, where we were just a few years ago, to now clean opinions, no findings, and the numbers improving. I mean, I, I'm not sure if there's a trifecta in the world of accounting and auditing, but that's probably it. So as Chris had described, their role is to basically take all these numbers that the city and, with our assistance, put together in this eighty-four-page booklet, and then verify them, to make sure that they're right, so that that way, people can look at those numbers and do some analysis, much like what we've done with the Performator, whether they're creditors, whether they're bondholders, whether they're citizens, and, and basically have comfort that, well, what they're looking at is correct. And so one of the things that we have put together for you over the years is to take these eighty-four pages and, and try to basically reduce it down into a scale of one to ten, how are we doing financially? What's our fiscal health, and are we getting better, getting worse? And so we've nicknamed this thing the Performator. It, it was actually designed for small-town Oklahoma towns about twenty years ago, where I seem to be having trouble communicating these eighty-four pages in a manner that people would understand. Now, when Chris talks, I understand everything he says, because I speak that language. If you're not an accountant, and you're not a government accountant, you don't speak that language, and it's kind of hard to follow along sometimes. But the Performator kind of reduces everything down to a scale of one to ten, it's really zero to ten. And so what we've been doing since about twenty-twelve is kind of tracking what our overall score is doing. And so on this Performator, on page five, you can kind of see the overall score, and where the score has been over the last five or six years. And notice that for the fiscal year ending June thirty-eighteen, we're now scoring the highest score of any of the years that we had. You can kind of see what had occurred, and, you know, as we've kind of talked in the past, we were headed the wrong direction twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and then halfway through twenty-sixteen, and then reversed course very dramatically, and have now kind of climbed back above where I would say the satisfactory level is, which is about a five. So we're now hovering right at about a six-point-six. That's three years now in a row that we've been back above satisfactory. That four-point-eight that you see there in fifteen, in sixteen, before it turned around, it was headed below a four. And then Jim stepped back in, a number of things occurred during that timeframe, for those of you that are familiar with it. A lot of things that kind of dug the hole that we were, found ourselves in, kind of reversed itself. And so that year actually ended up being good, and then followed by good years in, in both seventeen and eighteen also. And so we're now kind of where I would have expected us to be. Actually, we're a little bit ahead. I thought it might take us about five years to dig out of that hole, and we did it in about three. I don't think you're done, though. As Chris kind of said, everything improved. You know, we have more stuff, we have more net assets, we have better changes in net position. In other words, we were growing, both not only as a city, but we're growing financially also. And so as you can kind of see on that, that page five, we split it into three different ways to read it. You can look at the chart and see the numbers for the past. You can look at the little speedometer, red, yellow, green, up in the right, or you can kind of read the narrative and, and see where we're at. That six-point-six is actually made up of three components. We look at financial position separately, then we look at financial performance separately, and then we look at financial sustainability, or capability, to see whether or not we can sustain that. You want to kind of be above a five on all of those things, and if you notice that we are above a five in two of the three. One of them, we're significantly above, which is fiscal performance, means we had a great year. We had a great year, we had increased sales tax, we had increased cash flows, we've stuck money away in our reserves, we did everything almost perfectly right. There are not many tens that ever get scored on any of the components, and there has never been a ten scored on all of the components. That city doesn't exist. Just like a city doesn't exist that would score a zero, I think it would stop before it gets there. I did see Puerto Rico's financial statements recently, and they are testing my zero theory. They are the only government below a one right now, which is pretty severe. However, I think we're probably headed to somewhere in the, the lower sevens. I think that's probably where we need to be. I think that's probably a good target. I think that's a well-above satisfactory score for both fiscal health and performance. And the key is, I think it's sustainable. And as long as we can keep that financial capability score above a five, and we've been able to keep it above a five for the six years or so, seven years or so that are reported, I think that that means that we can grow and sustain that growth, as long as we manage our money well. And so the, the remaining twenty or so slides are really just the things that we analyze individually. How well-funded is your pension plan? How happy are employees and vendors that we can pay them on time? In other words, factors that we think make a government healthy and successful. And so if you wanted to read, you know, coffee table reading, a little bit about each ratio that we look at, you kind of see each ratio separately set aside with its own little speedometer, its own little chart, and you can kind of see how we then accumulate all that data to produce that overall score. So I'm going to echo what Chris said. All financial indicators pointed that we had a, a good year. I mean, the score change from where we were to where we are today in one year is about a twenty percent jump on this scale. So that's great. You jump twenty percent a year, my goodness, you're, you're going to be scoring probably higher than anybody else. I just don't think you're going to be able to sustain a twenty percent jump in this score. At some point, it's going to have to cap off, but I think you're on your way probably to, to a lower seven, which is where what I would consider most of the Oklahoma healthy governments that I compare you to, the Edmonds, the Durant's, the Ardmoors, the, the Broken Arrows, the Owassos, they're all scoring up in the lower sevens, upper sixes for June thirty-eighteen. So, you know, we do this for not only dozens of Oklahoma governments, but dozens of governments around the country, and then, as I mentioned, about eleven international governments also. So the highest score I've ever seen is a nine-point-one. It's happened once in twenty years. The lowest score, as I said, is right now hovering about a point-eight, but that's just not even feasible to us that we could ever get to something like that. But we are hovering at a six-point-six, which, again, I think is good and healthy considering where we were three years ago, two years ago, and I think we're on our way to a little bit stronger score over time. But the key is controlling spending, controlling that revenue growth, and then sustainability. And once you can do those three things, and then do it accurately, and make sure that your audits are clean, I think you'll, you'll probably see a better score.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Questions?
Anyone? Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time.
So we had a presentation and acceptance of the financial audit, so we'll go to the acceptance. Do I have a motion, please?
We have a motion.
We do have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? None. Vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item three-A, consider entering into an engagement letter with HBC CPAs and advisors to prepare the audit for the financial fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-nineteen, at an approximate cost of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item four-A, consider and take action with respect to Resolution YMA two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-one, a resolution of the Yukon Municipal Authority, called the Authority, authorizing the execution of professional services agreement pertaining to the financing of capital improvements benefiting the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing the Authority's financial advisor to distribute bid packages to prospective financial institutions in connection with the referenced financing and containing other provisions related thereto. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
And discussion? Mr. Gander? Yeah, I think this, yeah, we'll vote again later on. No, this, yeah, this is your part ready.
So this is the part of the CIP plan you've been working on for multiple years. This is the last of multi-years that we've laid out. Nine million, approximately nine million, five-hundred thousand dollars. We'll go out, present bid packages to banks around the state, national banks. I think BB&T out of South Carolina has won a couple of them in the past, Chase has been on them. We also presented to local banks. So we'll be back at your meeting on the seventh, and present you the bids at that time, and then we plan to close about ten days after that.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This, this money will be used to finalize the bill to pay the state for the rest of Frisco Road, our portion of, of an eighty-twenty project out there, and, and that we're paying a percentage of the construction, and it's our responsibility to pay the engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and utility relocation, and then a portion of the actual construction. And this is the last portion to pay for that. We also have a large debt to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority that loaned us the money to relocate a water line, if you'd call it, excess of six-hundred thousand dollars, and it's doable and payable by June for one of this fiscal, this year.
Okay. You anticipate a pretty good call for the bids there?
Yeah, and we'd like to hear that about the audit, so that, that'll help even further.
Yeah, we'll give you a copy of the audit to take with you when you send the bid out, I guess, if that's.
Yeah, I'll send it with.
If that would help.
Good timing.
But, well, it's a good time, and the economy here is good, so, you know, even though we've kind of flatlined for a little while here, we still are in a position right now to, it's, life is good.
Correct.
So, so you will bring those bids back to us? Like I said, do you anticipate a large number of bidders, or just a?
A handful. I mean, there's, there's different bids, different banks look for different things. Some, some banks want over thirty million, some banks want under ten million, because there's a bank qualified, so that's one thing I didn't talk about, but being under the ten million dollar mark, we're planning to designate this, this debt issuance as bank qualified, which means you get preferential, or the banks get preferential tax treatment on the money they lend you. So that'll also drive down the rates.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Vote, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item five-A, consider approving the second amendment to the tower lease with T-Mobile Central LLC for leased space on the water tower located at nine-forty Poplar Avenue in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per month, beginning May one, twenty-nineteen, renewable for two additional and successive five-year terms. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item six-A, consider approving the specifications and the authorizing the purchase agent to solicit proposals for the advertising on the Frisco Road Water Tower, the Tenth Street Water Tower, and the Yukon Parkway Water Tower. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one is the consent document. This item is placed on the agenda, so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A, minutes of the regular meeting of April the second, two thousand and nineteen; B, payment of material claims in the amount of nine-hundred-seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and six cents; Item C, designated the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus, and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, renewal of the agreement between the city of Yukon and Crawford Associates PC for the preparation of an annual financial statements and general accounting and advisory assistance through June thirty, two thousand and twenty; E, entering into a billboard advertising agreement with Central Oklahoma Marketing Group for a digital billboard advertising space from June one, two thousand and nineteen to December one, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred dollars; and F, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for May the seventh, seven P.M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item two, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby?
No reports seen, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three, acceptance of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item four, consider entering, entering into an engagement letter with HBC CPAs and advisors to prepare the audit for the next fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, at an approximate cost of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item five, consider entering, entering into a utility relocation agreement with the Quinton Little Company, Inc., to abandon a steel pipeline located within the proposed right-of-way for Interstate forty and Frisco Road interchange project, in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item six, consider approving the bid with A R C Pyrotechnics, Inc., to perform three firework shows, July the third, July the fourth, for the Freedom Fest and the Aug- firework shows, July the third, July the fourth, for the Freedom Fest, and the August twenty-ninth Rock the Root, for a total cost of forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Crosby, you want to comment on that?
Now, this is a, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, this is the same company that we viewed live last year. I think we used another company. We only had two bids on this particular item, and they were the low, and best bid, had the bid larger fireworks, and a larger number of fireworks than the other company did, and the lady that bid this evaluated it and recommended approval, worked out purchasing director, so we recommended approval to the council.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item seven, new business. Is there any new business, Mr. Shiver?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council discussion. Councilwoman Yonda?
Well, I just want to tell Erlene, it's truly been an honor to serve with you on this council, and thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Yukon. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
Well, I've enjoyed being involved in the city council for all those years. I'm going to miss it, but I'm still going to be in here. I may come and crochet with the... You might still see me. But, anyway, thank you. It's been wonderful. I hope I did a good job, and thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kachini?
I want to also thank Erlene for putting me under her wing and bringing me on this past year. I also like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and the staff for all their input and update on the finances, and it's great to be in the first year and looking good, financially speaking. I also want to thank the Yukon High School for allowing me to partake in the reality event this afternoon, so, thank you, Yukon High School. Thank you.
Councilwoman Toby?
I want to say thank you again to Papa Cox for doing a wonderful service. If you've ever volunteered at an elementary school, you get more back than you give. It's truly a blessing. And also to Erlene for the years of friendship and for your service, and we better not have seen the last of you. Remember to make the most of your tomorrows and be kind to one another.
I also want to congratulate Mr. Cox, our volunteers that we have, especially those that are very similar folks that come and spend their time like Papa Cox, to help the kids out, to make sure that they're safe coming and going, and getting in their cars, particularly at the elementary school. It's something very special, and each and every one of those volunteers should be applauded every day, because they're going out there putting themselves out just for us. Once again, I would like to give a very special thanks to Ms. Erlene, who's been a good friend for many years, and also a vital part of this council for a number of years as well. And certainly, we will miss her service very much, and I applaud her dedication to her service on the council itself. I want to thank Mr. Heim and Chris for getting Chris up in front of the group this year, and putting him at risk. And I want to thank the Gander's folks, and particularly, I want to thank Frank Crawford, for, three years ago, he came in to us and provided us with a lot of information we really didn't want to hear. And from that, we have taken that and been able to move forward in the right way. And last of all, I particularly want to thank Jim Crosby for coming back and spending time with us here that created the circumstance tonight where we have audits with no issues, where we have performance that's moving forward, and our ability to make this town grow and actually have a vision. So, with that, seeing no other business before the council this evening, we're done. Adfirmment.